I will now call to order the Arvada City Council Meeting for December 4, 2023. At this time, I will call upon Mayor Pro Tem Randy Mormon to do the moment of silence and pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence. And now please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rush, will you do the roll call?
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ferrey? Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make a motion to Councilmember Ferrey from tonight's business meeting.
All right, all council members will cast their votes. There we go, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Councilmember Ferrey is in excused absence. There are no minutes for approval, recognitions, or presentations on this day, so we'll move on to public comment. I see we have two in chambers that have signed up for public comment. I'll begin with Ms. Susan Doak.
Is this correct then?
Oh, my apologies. No, this will be for public comment for all business, not on the agenda this evening, so we'll call you back. Thank you. Daniel Mondragon.
Good evening, it's good to be with you all tonight. I just had to be here tonight, I'm sorry I couldn't be with you last week. I was wanting to come, last time I was in chamber was the night of the swearing-in, and it was a very special evening. And as I reflected on that evening, these words that I offered tonight came to mind from an ordinary Arvada citizen. An invocation: Creator of all, we gather here in this space along the Front Range where leaders and peoples have lived for thousands of years. We are grateful for this special day. We are grateful for these individuals who are beginning and continuing their leadership and service for the city of Arvada. We are grateful for the thriving community that is Arvada. May these be inspired each day with wisdom and dedication to fulfill the duties of their office. May they work collaboratively and with collegiality among themselves, with city staff, and with the members of the Arvada community. May they recall the words of the prophet Micah, "To act justly, to love tenderly, to walk humbly." We thank them for assuming the responsibility to guide Arvada into a future that continues and builds a city that is prosperous, healthy, friendly, and welcoming to all. May it be so. That night was special to be here for the swearing-in as a continuation of a long time, as long as I can remember, appreciation of inauguration days in our country. And I loved that Mark Williams spoke about the peaceful transfer of power. I am honored and I am proud of Arvada, the way in which we conducted, you all conducted, the election cycle and the acceptance of the results. Arvada is a model for other municipalities, so thank you for being here, for your answering the call to duty. There is a lot of expertise in this room, all of the experience and expertise that you bring to this endeavor of city government. The incredible expertise and experience of city staff that has gathered here and the ones not here tonight. And all of the incredible people in our neighborhoods that have so much experience, so much to bring forth to make our city even better than what it is today, or what it was yesterday. And so, I again, as I have been doing since just after the murder of George Floyd, call upon us all to work collaboratively, to create structures like perhaps some type of Community Inclusion Commission, where we have the opportunity and concrete vehicles that we can bring our talents, our expertise, together, staff, council, citizens. I look forward to our continued work together in the days, months, weeks, years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will call up Randy Stafford.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson, members of the council. I'm Randy Stafford, a resident of unincorporated Jefferson County and a member of the former Jefferson Parkway Advisory Committee. I'd like to congratulate you on your recent election victories and thank all of you for your public service. The last two election cycles in Arvada have produced a marked change in the composition of this council. The people of Arvada have spoken. My mother died of pancreatic cancer on September 3. She was a 1958 graduate of Arvada High School and a Bethe scholar. She went on to a long and distinguished career of public service in Jefferson County, chairing the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Foundation Board. The Stanley Lake Library for one opened during her tenure and bears her name on a plaque. The 1957 fire at the Rocky Flats Nuclear Weapons Plant happened on my mother's 17th birthday. It was the start of her senior year at Arvada High School, and she walked to school and slept with her windows open in the summer. Over the course of her life, she suffered from hypothyroidism, breast cancer, a cystic kidney which was removed, and terminal pancreatic cancer. She had no family history or lifestyle risk for any of those diseases. I come before you tonight to urge you to terminate Arvada's support for the Jefferson Parkway. It is high time for the city of Arvada to recognize the ongoing public health risk posed by the well-documented plutonium contamination in the environment surrounding the former nuclear weapons plant. It is high time for the city of Arvada to stop exacerbating the problem by rubber stamping development projects on contaminated ground and actively sponsoring an economically dubious tollway project that would risk reentraining carcinogenic plutonium particles into the air for downwind Arvadans to breathe. To continue investing in the Jefferson Parkway would be pure folly, so please, for the sake of your constituents' health and your city's economic strength, withdraw your litigation against Broomfield, disband the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, leave the contaminated ground undisturbed, and find better uses for other parts of the right-of-way. Please do this for past, present, and future Arvadans like my mother, who have been, are being, and will be subjected to an invisible and silent killer for another quarter million years. It is your highest civic duty to protect their health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are truly sorry for the loss of your mother. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, none on Zoom? All right. Next is the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that is R-23-111, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and the Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024 programs and services in Old Town Arvada. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Pfeiffer?
I move that consent item, Resolution 23-111, be approved.
Councilmembers will cast their votes. Oh, and Mr. Mormon, I apologize, you hit the speak button right as I was pressing the other, but go ahead, please.
I'm sorry for that. I just wanted to, and I see the members of the bid here, I just wanted to recognize we've had an ongoing conversation about recycling in Old Town, and I hope that that conversation is continually moving forward and want to offer, you know, my time if I can help in that effort so that we can see some advancement there, because I know that other cities like Fort Collins is a great example, they have been able to do this. And so I think that we can certainly learn from them, and I know you've, I think you've had conversations with other cities on this very topic. So I appreciate your work on it, but I do want to see us move forward on that, and I'm offering if I can help in any way.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda is passed six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. All right. We have no other resolutions on the agenda this evening, so now we will move to first readings. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB-23-029, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2023, be approved on first reading, order published in full and set for public hearing on December 18 at 6:15 p.m. And that CB-23-030, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada for Canyon Pines Triangle Property Annexation Number One, a parcel of land approximately located at 52 Canyon Pines Drive in the county of Jefferson and state of Colorado. CB-23-031, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada from Jefferson County A-1, Agricultural One, to City of Arvada PUD Planned Unit Development, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, approximately located at 52 Canyon Pines Drive, also known as Canyon Pines Triangle Property Annexation Number One. CB-23-032, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada for Canyon Pines, Arvada's Dubriardet Pump Station Annexation Number Two, approximately located at 52 Canyon Pines Drive in the county of Jefferson and state of Colorado. CB-23-033, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada from Jefferson County A-2, Agricultural Two, to City of Arvada PUD Planned Unit Development and OS Open Space, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, approximately located at 52 Canyon Pines Drive, also known as Canyon Pines, Arvada's Dubriardet Pump Station Annexation Number Two, be approved on first reading, order published in full, and set for public hearing on January 8, 2024 at 6:15 p.m.
Council will cast their votes. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. There we go. And now this evening, we'll be pointing members of the council to various boards and commissions. Councilmember Mormon, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Mayor Lauren Simpson to the Arvada City Attorney Committee, Arvada Municipal Court Judicial Committee, Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, Arvada Visitor Center Committee, Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, West Connect Coalition, and as an alternate to the E-470 Authority and the Old Town Business Improvement Bid, as Mayor, Mayor Simpson will also be a member of the Metro Mayor's Caucus.
Council will cast their votes. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Councilmember Davis?
I move to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Randy Mormon to the Arvada Audit Committee, Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities, Arvada Sustainability Committee, CML Policy Committee, Jefferson Parkway Highway Authority, Public Highway Authority, the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, and as an alternate to the Northwest Parkway Authority.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence.
Move to appoint Councilmember Shawna Ambrose to the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, the Arvada Audit Committee, Bond Oversight Committee, Jefferson County R1 Schools Coordinating Committee, and as an alternate to the Arvada Visitor Center Committee.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
This is a long one. Sharon Davis. She retired, so you got some time.
She has the time.
I move to appoint Councilmember Sharon Davis to the Apex Coordinating Committee, Arvada Municipal Court and Judicial Committee, Arvada Parks Advisory Committee, CML Policy Committee, Jefferson Economic Development Council, and an alternate to the Denver Regional Council of Governments, E-470 Authority, Jeffco Transportation Action Advisory Group, Jefferson County Community Corrections Board, and West Connect Coalition.
If council members will cast their votes. Thank you. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Councilmember Ambrose?
I move to appoint Councilmember Lisa Ferrey to the Arvada Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, Arvada Fire Protection District Coordinating Committee, Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. COG, Housing Advisory Committee, Jeffco Transportation Action Advisory Group, Jeff Tag, Jefferson County Community Corrections Board, Smart City Advisory Committee, and as an alternate to the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, ACRB.
There we go. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Councilmember Bob Pfeiffer to the Apex Coordinating Committee, Arvada City Attorney Committee, Arvada Fire Protection District Coordinating Committee, Arvada Transportation Committee, Jefferson County R-1 Schools Coordinating Committee, Jefferson Parkway Public Health Authority, Smart City Advisory Committee as an alternate to the Northwest Parkway Authority.
That passes, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. And finally, Councilmember Davis?
I appoint Councilmember John Marriott to the Arvada Economic Development Association Board, Bond Oversight Committee, Old Town Business Improvement Bid, and the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Thank you all, good luck, and enjoy the committees, they are fun. I will now open the public hearing for public hearing on the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funding and 2024 Human Services Grant Funding. At the same time, we will consider R-23-112, a resolution approving the submission of the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding, and the, and R-23-113, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of City of Arvada Human Services Funding Pool Funds for 2024. I believe Ms. Carrie Espinoza will be presenting on this item?
Ms. Espinoza, we just created the situation, set it up so that we have the presentation initially, so that council has the background to vote on the resolution after the public hearing. And so that's why we set it up that way. I apologize if that's not what you were expecting, we just did that last time, and so that's how we set it up.
All good, Carrie. Thank you so much.
So it's this time of year where the city of Arvada prepares its annual action plan, which is a requirement through the Community Development Block Grant, which is a grant that we receive from HUD. The federal requirements require us to invite members of the public to voice comment on what we propose for our projects for the upcoming year. And so this opportunity is for anyone from the public to come in and voice their opinions on the proposed 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you so much, and I know that we have a member of the public here to speak. Ms. Doak, please come. And thank you for your patience with me, I'm still learning what all the different forms look like.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Susan Doak, I'm a citizen of Arvada and I live in District Four. Tonight, I am here to thank the members of the Human Services Advisory Committee for their work reviewing grant applications and offering city council recommendations for use of the Community Development Block Grant. They have done an excellent job focusing on the vital work being done by nonprofits working within Arvada. In particular, I'm appreciative of their support for Mission Arvada of the Rising Church, where I am a volunteer on the grant-writing team. Mission Arvada will use this funding to provide individualized case management to help unsheltered people to get housing and to support those who've received housing to keep that housing. For people experiencing long-term homelessness, finding housing is a complex task. It requires multiple steps to make it through the process, all complicated by the daily search for meals and shelter. It really helps to have someone on your side, and that's where Mission Arvada excels. The volunteers and staff at Mission Arvada provide clients with hope, hope of getting off the streets, hope in the future. Hope comes from knowing someone cares about you and believes in you. Without that support, it's hard to think you can change your circumstances when you hit a rough patch. That's why the case management position this grant from the city will fund is so vital. To have someone walking by your side makes all the difference in staying motivated to get housing. And it's been successful. Mission Arvada case managers have helped 190 people into permanent housing in the last three years. That support for Mission Arvada doesn't disappear once you get a place. The housing support case managers help clients transition to apartment living by meeting client needs with a listening ear and practical help building skills. When fully funded, Mission Arvada saw 98% of supported clients maintain their housing. Recently, that rate has dropped to 85%, which we think is directly related to the lack of funding for our housing support staff. We are hopeful this city grant will bring that retention rate back up in 2024. Getting people into housing is great. Keeping them housed is equally important. As most of you know, I work for the Jefferson County Libraries and have spent many hours on the desk at the Arvada Library. I help people find information and resources. Being able to refer people to a competent, well-run provider like Mission Arvada is a real blessing for our community. Thank you for your support of their compassionate, effective work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else in chambers this evening like to speak to the resolutions? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I will open the, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and open R-23-112 and R-23-113 for council member questions and actions. Councilmember Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the citizen participation process in the executive summary, I believe it is, report.
I'm seeing that we didn't get any public comment, and I'm curious as to what efforts we did to engage the public on this.
So we notify, we place a public notice in the Arvada press inviting the public to come forth and provide comment on the annual action plan. So by way of the public notice, we post a notice regarding this public hearing, as well as we send out notification to the nonprofit organizations who might have been interested in voicing and providing comment for the human services recommendations. They are also invited to make comment.
And so we didn't receive comment from the nonprofits either, is that correct?
No, nothing in writing.
And so, I mean, I guess, you know, part of why I'm asking this is thinking about those that are served by these types of funds, most of them, I would guess, are not going to be easily accessible to the way we communicate normally through these methods. So I'm wondering if there's other ways that we could be doing that outreach to the people, particularly the people that are being served by these programs.
Sure, sure, we can expand.
I think that would be something for us to look into the future of doing, and I appreciate looking into that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council?
I'm sorry, I did have another one.
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I see, I believe 15 is the number of homes we are providing for single-family home rehabilitation. And do we see a demand greater than that, than 15 homes?
I would say, right now, the waitlist for the Essential Home Repairs Program is approximately two years. We made a transition to Brothers Redevelopment earlier this year. This was a program that we administered internally in the city for decades. And we made the decision to partner with Brothers Redevelopment to take on that administration. They're an experienced nonprofit and could take this on. They do it for other jurisdictions as well. It took some time to get the program started, but we are at approximately 10 projects this year, so we're close to our target. And 15 to 20 is about average as far as what we can expect to see through this program. But we are, as we continue, since this is so, this partnership is so new with Brothers Redevelopment, looking at extending the capacity there so they can take on additional projects is a conversation that we want to have with them. Because we do have the funds to support it, it's just a capacity building that we need to focus on right now.
Okay, glad to hear that, because it sounded like two-year waiting list, that we've got a significant demand for it, and 15 seems low to me. So I was just curious how we have that number set, and it sounds like you said you were looking at how we could expand that and working with Brothers Redevelopment, so thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Don't everybody press your buttons at once. Councilmember Pfeiffer, thank you.
I'll move Resolution 23-112, Resolution approving the submission of the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funding be approved.
Council will cast their votes. All right. Everybody has voted, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Ferrey being in excused absence. Thank you.
I also move that Resolution 23-113, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the City of Arvada Human Services Funding Pool Funds for 2024 be approved. I do have a comment before I vote, Mayor.
Yes, absolutely, please.
You know, I appreciate, obviously, what the Human Services Team does, or the appointed committee from council. You know, I was looking at this list, and even though, I mean, obviously, all of these organizations impact our community in all levels. But I wanted to take note of the ones that unfortunately are not recommended for funding. And I will say, I'm a little disappointed that historically we have funded, I'll just pull one out, for example, the Audio Information Network of Colorado for decades, and if you don't know what they do, they translate newspapers into audio, or audio, or braille, and they focus on a group of our community that may not be serviced. And it just, I just wanted to take a note that it was a little disappointing that some people that create very unique support of our community were not funded this year, so I don't know if that's something that we need to kind of look at. I mean, most of the things that we did, that the committee funded was around homelessness and unhoused, as well as mostly that, I should just say, and food desert issues. So anyways, it just, there's other levels of our community that don't, that may not get that experience, because like something like that organization only got $5,000, so, and they had a huge impact in our community in my eyes. So maybe it's a discussion down the road of additional funds should be put into this so that we may broadcast that net a little bit bigger for some that were close. And then lastly, just to continue to monitor these organizations for the success outcome that we're expecting for future funding. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Marriott?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment to your motion, accepting these funding recommendations. The amendment that I would propose would be to remove the $25,000 to Mission Arvada at the Rising Church and instead spread it amongst the 11 applicants who were not recommended for funding. And here's why, here's my, here's the logic behind that. While I acknowledge that the Rising Church makes some, or the Mission Arvada makes some positive differences in some people, they also create significant collateral damage. The residents of Old Town, one of whom I spoke to this week, who complained that as, in her walk, of her walking her children to school in Old Town, had to witness somebody with a butane torch preparing drugs for- preparing drugs for intravenous injection on the sidewalk as they walked by. Additionally, as we've heard over and over and over again, every business in Old Town has suffered significantly and significantly in greater numbers than this grant would be. I think, you know, Mission Arvada has had an opportunity to try to reduce these conflicts that we see. And near as I can tell, there's no changes in their operations whatsoever. And so I think I find it hard to support them financially when the collateral damage caused is so great, many, many, many multiples of the grant that we would give them. So anyway, that's my amendment to your motion.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, do you accept the amendment to your motion?
I'm sorry, Madam. It's not a friendly amendment.
Oh, it's not a friendly.
So you wanted to...
To vote on.
All right.
Vote on that amendment?
Yeah.
All right, then we will, if it's not a friendly amendment, we will vote. Really quickly, though, I see Councilmember Ambrose has requested to speak.
Yes, on that amendment, I had the chance to tour Mission Arvada just this past week. And I want to say that while what you're saying, what Councilwoman Marriott is actually is saying is quite true, there's a lot of other things about Mission Arvada that help the downtown area that do not have to do with the criminalization of poverty. For example, when the Old Town area wanted to make sure there was no smoking going around, Mission Arvada was able to speak directly to the constituency that they serve there and say, "If you are caught smoking, you will not have services." And we have not had people smoking there. The shopping cart ban, they were also hugely instrumental in helping the downtown, Old Town, to make sure that there weren't any shopping carts there because they have a high relationship with the people that they serve to say, "If you bring a shopping cart here, you will not get services." So I view that Mission Arvada has a really important power for Old Town that could be used more with collaboration with city services to make sure that it doesn't matter if you're homeless or not, you should not be preparing drugs on the street. And I think if we did not have Mission Arvada to enforce these cultural norms, then the businesses and the police force would be overburdened trying to enforce norms. And we have found time and again that the overcriminalization of poverty has allowed people to just be going to jail and then right back downtown. And it doesn't help them at all. Whereas Mission Arvada, as was spoken during the public hearing, has gotten 190 people into homes, which is a far more effective way to look at the issue of homelessness and crime and a permanent solution to these issues. So, and I also want to say that when Mission Arvada was not given the funding, it did affect their operations in that the executive director went without pay and two other staff members went without pay. They had to have the congregation support them instead. So if the city would like to rely on them so excessively for services other than arresting people and putting them in jail, which has proven time and again to not work, then we should be supporting them.
Councilmember Mormon, you are next.
Thank you. I just want to add and point out that, as I understand it, the funding in here for Mission Arvada is very specific to providing assistance for permanent housing, which would get people out of Old Town. And so therefore, I strongly oppose this amendment and feel that this would actually be of service to the concerns that were raised by Councilmember Marriott.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Having worked for a community that had a large homeless population, I have learned that if you take away some of these core systems, the homeless don't go away. What you have, then, is more of the visible and adverse homeless that are congregating and pushing those who are trying to seek permanent housing out.
And Councilmember Pfeiffer.
You know there are several organizations on this list that provide homelessness. I don't know why we're focusing on just one. Family Tree is getting money out of this. Community Table is getting money out of this. The Action Center is getting money for rent assistance. The Senior Resource Center is contributing to the elderly side of it. Beyond Home is also getting funding. Hope House is also getting funding. So I'm just pointing out, it is all going to that. Like I said earlier, I was not expecting your proposal, John, so that kind of threw me. But it does align with other 11 that didn't get any money, like Precious Child, Archway Communities, Audio Information Network, Benefit and Action, Brothers Development, CASA, Special Olympics, Outdoor Lab Fund. I mean, this is, when we look at the diversity and equity in our community, I think it's only fair that we don't just focus on one topic, which it's clearly shown in all of the money we're giving, more than 70% of it is going to address some sort of form of unhoused or housing issues. I don't agree with my peers that the $25,000 that's being taken or suggested to be removed from here and peppered amongst the 11 that were declined, I think is more equitable for the diversity of our community. And therefore, I will be supporting your motion, Mr. Marriott, because I do believe that the equity of this funding that is limited shouldn't be solely narrowly focused on, yes, a very important issue and topic of our community and that we need to address it. There's almost a dozen other already listed and already getting money, well more than $25,000, that address the same duplicative effort. So for that reason, I'll be supporting Mr. Marriott's.
All right. If there are no more comments from council, I will make my comments before calling the vote. To Mr. Councilmember Pfeiffer's point, I actually disagree that all of this is for homelessness looking at where many of these funds are allocated to go. We have health care for low-income children through the care and clinic. That's not necessarily a homeless service. That's for low-income children. We also have emergency food assistance. We have Meals on Wheels. That is almost by definition for housed seniors who are maybe indigent or struggle with food access. And so there's numerous other programs in here. We could continue to go on. Ralston House is for their child advocacy center. Again, these are housed children through Ralston House who are being kept in a safe learning environment while their mothers continue to move up and get education. So I do disagree that we are targeting a single issue here. I do think we have spread the money around. And I also recall us a year ago, or perhaps two years ago, having a discussion on this same dais about our funding. And perhaps we shouldn't spread it so thin as to everybody only getting $5,000 to $10,000 and instead concentrate in larger amounts on fewer charities. So perhaps that is exactly what the team has brought to us this evening. And I know it's a lot of hard work. Unfortunately, there are more good causes than could possibly go around than there are resources. We make hard decisions every single day, and I want to thank the team for their hard work. And with that, I will call the vote. This is voting on the amendment. A yes vote would be to support Mr. Marriott's amendment. A no vote will be against it. All right. And with that, the amendment fails four to two with Councilmembers Pfeiffer and Councilmembers Marriott voting for, myself, Mayor Simpson, Councilmembers Ambrose, Mayor Pro Tem Mormon, Councilmember Davis, all voting against the amendment, and Councilmember Ferre being an excused absence. And with that, I believe we have the resolution still on the table as it originally stood, and I have called the vote for that. With that, that vote passes five to one with Councilmember Marriott being a dissent and Councilmember Ferre being an excused absence. Next on our agenda is our second public comment time. Do we have anyone in chambers this evening who wishes to speak now at this time as well? Seeing none, Ms. Rush? I see we have none on Zoom. Are there any council members? Go to council member reports that would like to speak. Mayor Pro Tem Mormon, you were quick on that button.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce that I'll be having my monthly coffee chat on Friday, December 15th, at Sweet Bloom Cafe on 77th and Watts from 2:00 to 4:00. Invite anyone who would like to come and talk about what's on your mind with regards to our wonderful city.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, I attended the empty bowl function at Arvada High School, and it was simply amazing. They had students make bowls. You could buy a bowl, and then you go in and have soup and various desserts. And I was really buoyed by the number of community members that showed up. That was simply amazing. We are such a caring and compassionate community. It was a lot of fun to see all the kids, the parents, and then the different entertainment areas around. Thank you.
Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, I want to bring something to my fellow councilmembers' attention. I believe December 15th would be our last opportunity for us to adjust our mill levy to account for the dramatic property tax increases that Arvada residents are about to find. You know, the failure at the ballot box of Prop HH, along with then the tepid action by the legislature in their special session. It's interesting that the governor himself sent a letter to all local governments, and I quote, saying, "Now it is the time, now it's up to you, local elected officials, to do more, which is why I'm urging you to reduce the tax rate, your mill levy, in your district." Those words straight out of Governor Polis's mouth. I would propose that the City of Arvada ought to take a look at the total revenue generated by our very small number of mills last year, adjust that forward for inflation, and then reduce our mills this year to collect just that amount of money and to preserve as many of our local residents as possible. I have, myself, two tenants who both are probably right on the edge of being evicted. Both of them probably are going to be evicted. And they certainly are going to be evicted when their rent goes up because the property taxes go up. And I think while our mill levy is small, we can set a really good example for the other local governments whose mill levy is not small. And I'm talking about the fire district, the school district, the county, other property taxing entities. So I just want to throw that out there. I'd like you guys all to think about that and think about whether that's action you would like to take or not. I would recommend that we do. I think us sitting around and doing nothing probably is not warranted in this case. I would appreciate if we did something.
Thank you. Ms. Gillis, perhaps we could put something in the memo with financials from Mr. Archer on what those impacts and numbers could be.
We run those calculations, and we can put them in the weekly if that's your preferred communication.
I think that would be great. Thank you. All right. And with that, Ms. Gillis, do you have any more items for this evening?
I do not. Just a reminder that next week, December 11th, we will have a bond project update provided by the team. And then the infrastructure annual report will also be next Monday.